I'm going to call it our meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Can't hear me? All right. How's this? All right, good level, thank you. Now that we have our level test, I'm going to call the meeting to order and we're going to begin with the pledge of allegiance with our student liaison lead us in the pledge, please.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Walter.
Here.
Councilmember Brigham.
Here.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Mayor Bagby.
Present.
And Tucker.
Here.
And our next item is report out of closed session.
There is no action to report out of closed session.
Right, thank you. Any conflicts of interest to declare?
Nope.
Seeing none, we will move on to agenda review, any changes and or deletions, Mr. City Manager.
Mayor Bagby, no changes proposed by staff to the agenda?
All right, all right now, we will move on to public comments, any person wishing to speak to the city council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any items on the council agenda during that item pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Each person wishing to speak must go to the podium and advised by the mayor, that's me, and speak directly into the microphone like I'm doing. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes unless additional time is authorized by the mayor. Would anyone like to come forward at this time? Please come forward and, you know the drill, add your name.
Councilmembers, mayor, and staff of 2019. At the October 9th city council meeting, I submitted a petition signed by 120 residents for quote, "two audible alarms or sirens to be installed in our town providing additional emergency notifications that would make our town safer," end quote. And it was assigned to an ad hoc committee. Currently, Sonoma County is developing plans for an alert system. And recently, in the press Democrat, James Gore and Susan Goran were quoted as, they believe that the sound alert system should be at the top of the list. So my question is, what progress has the ad hoc committee made so far?
Is there something that, information that you can update us on, David?
Absolutely, Mayor, if I can address this, the petition that was submitted by Ms. Davis. The, my recollection is that the council referred that matter to the Joint City Fire Subcommittee. And since the date that the petition was submitted, that committee has not reconvened. But obviously, tonight, one of the discussions is appointments to that subcommittee. And it's, and also consideration of scheduling the dates for the next meeting. And then it would be at that time that that discussion item would be placed on that subcommittee agenda and would be considered. And then also Ms. Davis would be welcome to attend and be able to discuss in more detail the petition that was submitted to, to the council.
Okay, thank you very much.
Stay tuned for the time of the meeting. Great. Anyone else from the public like to come forward? All right, well, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the council unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Does anyone from the council want to see any items removed? Any, anyone from the public? All right, well.
Mayor, I just, I do have one, one comment to note for the council. And that's in regards to item five on the consent calendar, which is a resolution authorizing execution of contract with Telstar instruments. I just want to note that, you know, the normal process for a contract of, for that type of work would normally be subject to a competitive bidding process. Staff with, and in consultation with our city attorney, determined that the, the work is largely maintenance work and is a requirement of our permit that's issued through the Regional Water Quality Control Board, that we're not subject to the bidding, formal bidding processes. And therefore, we're in a position to directly contract with, with the firm that would perform the installation of the required monitoring equipment. And I just wanted to kind of note that for the council for the record.
Great, great information. So given the digital information, does anyone have any interest in pulling that item or any others?
Nope.
Okay, well, seeing none, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move approval.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote.
Councilmember Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Walter.
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham.
Aye.
Councilmember Turner.
Aye.
Mayor Bagby.
Aye.
Student liaison Tucker.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item is communications, and I have, I have two items. Does anybody else have any communications that they want to submit or discuss?
Yes, I have a couple, if I may, Madam Mayor. On Jan, this is the, no.
Nope, that's later.
No.
That's later.
Give me, Madam Mayor, I have no comment.
Not at all. I just wanted to make, enter it into the record, I've already forwarded these to our, our city clerk. I'd received two items over the Christmas break, one from a Ms. Hammond regarding homelessness and the other from a Ms. Glickner regarding a traffic issue. And I've forwarded those to our, our city clerk and they're going to be assigned to the appropriate subcommittees, so.
Could you see that?
Certainly. There you go. All right. And so, anyone else have any communications that they want to bring to our attention? Okay, seeing none, and that, since there are no public hearings, we will move on to new business and discussion and direction on draft city council 2019 Subcommittee, Joint Committees, and Regional Board Committee appointments. And that is Mr. Kelly.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm David Kelly, your city manager. The item tonight for you is discussion direction on appointment of subcommittees, joint committees, and regional boards by the council. By way of background, staff distributed to the council preference forms for your review and input, included in your packet is a, the results of the preference forms that were submitted to cities, to city staff, to me, and where I compiled the results and identified your preferences for both subcommittees and regional boards. And what I've developed is a set of recommendations for, for the council's consideration. That's really just a, a starting point for council discussions on which subcommittees you would like to, to sit on as well as regional boards. To share with you, there was some criteria that I used to develop the recommendations that are included in your packet. You know, staff attempted to make recommendations based on, you know, who were the previous subcommittee members in, in order to retain and keep some continuity between the 2018 Subcommittee membership and the 2019. Staff made every attempt to keep one of the existing Subcommittee members where, where possible. Also, staff attempted, or used the guideline to ensure that your, your top or recommended, you know, your number one preference ranking was provided for in the recommended Subcommittee upon which a council member would sit. In some cases, that was challenging because there were multiple council members that, you know, had the same preference for the same Subcommittee. So in that case, your second preference was, was provided for in the recommendation. Again, the, the other guideline that was used was to try to ensure an equal workload amongst the council members. So what it worked out to be was that there would be two council members, which in, in the recommendations was Councilmember Cruz and Vice Mayor Walter would serve on three subcommittees. And there were three appointments, including Mayor Bagby, Councilmember Brigham, and Councilmember Turner, that would serve on two, two Subcommittee appointments. And that, that just, that's kind of how it falls with respect to five council members and, and six subcommittees. So including your packet, I've identified what those recommendations are. And what I, what I recommend we do is maybe just walk down the list and make the appropriate adjustments as we go. But it's really, again, up to the council on how you would like to, to discuss and entertain the city manager's recommendations. One thing I would like to note is I've pointed out in the, in the draft Subcommittee appointment matrix that council can also discuss and consider revised meeting times for the subcommittees. I think, you know, there's a history for how those, those Subcommittee meeting times and dates were set, so that, that may, it's an opportunity for this council to revise those, those meeting times. For example, during the various discussions with the Finance, Admin, and Police Subcommittee, there were just, there was a number of requests from the, from the community, from the public to move those a little bit later during the day. They were normally scheduled to start at two and, and there were various times when the community recommended, you know, starting at maybe at four. So that might be a reason why you want to, as a council, discuss changing those meeting times and dates. And also to reflect what your role is on other subcommittees or other regional boards and ensure that there's no conflict. So just wanted to point that out. I think in, in, in line with that, it's also an opportunity for the council to consider the meeting date and time for, for your council meetings. Right now, we meet the second, fourth Tuesday of the month. Previously and historically, the council had met on, on the second, fourth Wednesdays of the month. So if, if you so, are so inclined, council could consider revising the meeting time and date for, for your council meeting. Ultimately, given your recommendations today, what staff will do is bring back a resolution that will formally adopt these, your, your recommended appointments. So, you know, you'll have a way, you'll have an opportunity to consider your recommendations today at your next meeting. And we'll, we'll consider that by, by resolution. Getting back to the issue of the, of considering an alternative meeting time and date for your council meeting, I just want to make the announcement that Deputy City Attorney Kate Cook will be leaving us unfortunately. And her last meeting will be our next meeting. But we're going to be bringing back an important topical matter that Kate is going to oversee, which will be kind of her last row, so I would say, thanks Kate for your service to the community and, and we really appreciate the legal guidance that you've provided to us. And what, what, should the council consider, want to consider the time and date for a council meeting? What, what that does present is the opportunity for the return of our city attorney pretty, pretty fairly immediately. He's continuing to serve in an interim basis for, for a city attorney for another jurisdiction on Tuesdays. And with Kate's departure, if we keep the Tuesday meeting dates, it will be necessary for us to have at least an interim basis, another deputy city attorney assigned to us. And, and there's other reasons from a staffing perspective to support moving to Wednesday, but that's really a council decision. And what best fits your scheduling based on discussion of the appointments to your regional boards and, and your regional, and, and your subcommittees. And again, those meeting times and all kind of factors in together. With that said, it's, it's your pleasure, Mayor, on how you'd like to proceed, if you want to.
Let's go ahead, let's just go ahead and go down the list as you'd suggested.
Okay, all right.
And that way, they can, you know, speak now or forever hold your peace, pretty much.
And just, just a reminder that if, if you do make changes to, to the manager's recommendations, you know, it, it may have impacts on, on what other committees you serve, but again, that's, that's your discretion. So starting with airport, the 2018 Subcommittee members were former Vice Mayor Russell and now Mayor Bagby. The recommended appointments is Mayor Bagby and Councilmember Brigham. That, that meeting does, currently is scheduled for the first Tuesday every four months at 8:00 AM in the morning.
We might want to change that.
I would like to change.
Sorry, Carol, if you're watching. But we don't, we don't have to do that now, I'm assuming. Should we do it now? Sure? Okay.
Yeah, staff will have, we'll bring back a, a resolution based on your, based on your recommended appointment setting, the regular meeting times and dates, as well as who the Committee members are.
I have them like four, because I can get a lot of work done in the morning before. But if you want, if you need to do 10, we can do 10.
It's a Tuesday?
It's a Tuesday.
Okay, well, if we're going to do four, then we definitely have to move this meeting.
Oh, let's just do 10 then, if that works for you.
No, we're going to move it anyway, aren't we?
Are we going, okay. All right, start over. Now, where are we? Where, so we're, first Tuesdays, you want, you want to change first Tuesdays or?
No, Tuesday's fine.
To Tuesday? But what time, what time works for you?
It's only every four months.
Yeah.
Anytime after 10 on Tuesday.
Okay, so let's do, let's go ahead and do 10, because that's kind of standard. So is that good?
First Tuesday at 10:00 AM?
At 10:00 AM. Okay, great.
Okay, moving on? Moving on. To Finance, Administration, and Police, this is one of the subcommittees where four, four council members identified their preferences, their top preference. So it was, it was a little challenging for your city manager to make a firm recommendation here. But your, your 2018 Subcommittee members were Vice Mayor Walter and Councilmember Brigham. And the recommendation was Mayor Bagby and Vice Mayor Walter.
And Madam Mayor, I'm okay with that. I would like to change the time.
What time would you like it to be?
Four o'clock, so in the afternoon.
You want to do four o'clock? That work, that should work, so I would change that to four. Yeah, that usually works better with my work schedule, so thank you. All right.
Moving on?
Moving on.
So the next, the next Subcommittee is Planning and Community Development. The 2018 Subcommittee members were Councilmember Brigham and Mayor Bagby. The recommended appointments are Councilmember Brigham and Councilmember Cruz.
Anybody?
That's fine with me.
It's fine with me. I have to say that I, I like that Planning and Community Development, but in the situation I'm in right now, with the property I own and stuff, it's going to mean a lot of recusals on my part. I will not be sitting in those committee meetings for the project across the street, the project next door to me with the Cherry Creek housing, with the zoning issues, especially the, so just letting, warning you that I will spend more time outside that meeting than I will probably in it, so.
Well, I have a question too, because I live close to Times Square.
Would that be a problem?
How, you don't live that close, do you?
Staff will, in, in terms of the, the question raised by Councilmember Cruz, staff will prepare a map identifying the setback distance. One of the things I, you know, do want to touch on, I think that a, a number of the items that pertain to Times Square, that pertain to the zoning ordinance, that also pertain to, you know, a topical issue like cannabis, I'm not sure that we're going to see much discussion of those particular issues at the Planning and Community Development Subcommittee at this particular time, though they are going to come before Planning Commission and, and council. So, you know, that may be an area where we'll have to look at the conflict issue and look at that carefully.
But it would be minimal for you, so. I'm willing to jump in, you might be willing, we can.
Madam Mayor, what I was going to suggest was perhaps we leave it the way it is with Councilmember Brigham and Cruz, and we appoint an alternative at this point that will keep abreast of everything, so if either one has to recuse, somebody could just jump right in.
Volunteer for that, if I may.
I really prefer that, I, I think that Councilmember Brigham has brought up some important points. I'd, I'd really like to see somebody jump in it who can commit and do it.
Public Works and Planning and CDA, do you have a preference?
Well, what I was thinking is, the other.
Knowing that if we change one thing that David's put together, it's going to collapse like a house of cards, but go ahead.
Well, here's what I was thinking, the only other committee that I'm on, other than Public Works, which meets bimonthly, is the Joint City Cloverdale Fire District, which meets every four months. Now, whether Councilmember Cruz and I choose to discuss the frequency in which that committee meets might change things, but I would be willing to just simply take on Planning and CDA, considering that I have one that meets only three times a year.
And are you available at that 4:00 PM time?
I love.
Can you make that work?
The 4:00 PM time.
You love the 4:00 PM time, okay.
I'm kind of in the same boat as you, whereas if I can have as much of my day as I can and dedicate the rest of it to Cloverdale, that behooves me the best.
That's, okay. So does anyone, is that okay with you?
It's okay with me, the only thing I bring in is the history. And I understand the water districts, I understand all the history. So that's.
That's my only, that, that's my, is, is just the, not the ability, it's the, the knowledge, you know, the his, that we bring to it, that's the only. And, and you have any thoughts on this, Vice Mayor Walter?
No, not really. I, I think, I think the new council members could very easily go to the city webpage, review the notes from the last year, the minutes on every single one, of the meetings on that committee. If they have any questions, they can meet with either Kevin or David and come up to speed pretty quickly on it. We, as a full council, should be receiving those minutes anyhow, so we'll know exactly what's going on. You know, I'll throw myself out there, if you would like me to serve on that, I will do that. But I think they can bring themselves up to speed quickly with a little homework.
I, I'm very flexible.
So give it to him.
Well, I was thinking, why can't Marianne be an alternate or?
Because more than likely, if someone has to recuse themselves or is gone, it might be something that she has to recuse herself for anyway.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
I've got a couple of projects I'm working on in the background. That is going to take up a lot of my time anyway. So I'll be checking in on most of the subcommittees for one reason or another, but I'm happy to just step off. And if you would like it, you can have it.
I'm okay with that, Vice Mayor.
I can support that.
And just, just to confirm.
Mr. City Manager?
Is there a desire to, to swap here?
No, not, he didn't want to, so.
Just let him, yeah, I would say just put Turner in.
And take me off.
Yeah.
Okay. So just to reflect in the record that the recommended appointments for Planning and CDA are Councilmember Turner and Councilmember Cruz. And just to note, is, is there one of you that would like to be designated as the chair?
You guys want to flip for it?
They could decide that one, they could.
They can decide that?
They can decide that.
Yeah, at the Subcommittee, yeah.
Okay.
I'm sure there's an app for that. Okay, so living right along to.
I, I'll probably, I would maybe suggest that just alphabetically, Cruz comes before Turner.
That was a poor suggestion.
Poor suggestion.
I'm just kidding.
For those of us at the beginning of the alphabet, we're fine with that. Actually, I think that it's, can we, are we able to leave it until their first Subcommittee meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and, we'll let them fight it out amongst themselves. All right, moving along to Public Works then.
Okay, Public Works, the previous Subcommittee members were then Vice Mayor Russell and Councilmember Walter, and the recommended appointments are Councilmember Turner and Vice Mayor Walter.
Okay.
And I, I would need to change the time.
Yeah. And I'm fine with the committee, but I would also like to change the time.
Move it to four or?
Four o'clock would be beautiful, if we can swing that, with all parties involved, looking at you, Mr. Wincon.
That's fine with me, but that's going to rest on when we have our city council meetings.
Right, I was just going to point that out, good, good point, Vice Mayor, is that if you, if, if you decide to continue with Tuesdays, potentially, well, it is the third Tuesday, so it's the second, so there won't be.
It's the second and fourth.
Oh, excuse me.
So this is the fourth, so that's.
It would, there would be a conflict if, if you keep.
So is there a problem, Councilmember Turner, with you on a council day coming, being, can you, could you be back by three? What would?
We're going to move it anyway.
We're going to move it anyways?
So what?
You don't want to move it up, you don't want to bet it up against the council? I'm wondering if it might work better for his work schedule.
I mean, I'd, I'd be fine to put that in pencil, but I have a feeling that when we come to the discussion regarding the date and time of our city council meeting, things will just kind of fall into place.
Things will change.
Is my assumption, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, it's kind of pending that discussion, so we'll put a pin in that one, okay?
So confirming Turner, Councilmember Turner, Vice Mayor Walter, and 4:00 PM.
We had all of them last year, so.
So 4:00 PM, so 4:00 PM for now, on, on the fourth Tuesday, okay.
Two goals last year.
Let's move on to Joint City Cloverdale Fire District.
Okay. The 2018 Subcommittee members were then Mayor Paula and Councilmember Brigham, and the recommended appointments are Councilmember Cruz and Councilmember Turner. So it's been two subcommittees with it.
And is it always 5:30?
It generally has been 5:30, and I think that's a reflection in large part of the fire district staff and the board members.
Availability, yeah. Okay, thank you.
I can, I can keep this time.
Okay.
Some of the board members work, just like you guys.
Yep, that's right.
All right, so then the Joint City Unified School District.
Okay, the 2018 Subcommittee members, again, were Mayor Paula and now Vice Mayor Walter, and the recommended appointments are Councilmember Cruz and Vice Mayor Walter.
And I'm okay with that, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, how's that time for you?
That works for me.
Councilmember Cruz, does that work? And is it 5:30, is that 5:30 start, or 5:00 o'clock start time because of, of school staff as well?
I think so, and the board members.
Okay, and so maybe after your first meeting, you can, yeah, we'll see what happens. And of course, all of us might, depending on what happens with regional and other boards, we'll see what happens.
Should we discuss now the, the moving the council, so we know about these other boards?
Do you, okay, do you want to go ahead and talk about the council night, or do you want to talk about some of the other items first, which is your preference?
Well, it's really up to you, Mayor, but maybe, maybe.
And let's talk about the council night first then.
Okay.
Get that out of the way.
Madam Mayor, could we just back up to the school one more time?
Certainly.
I'd just like to make sure that Tucker's available to come to those meetings as well and the student liaison.
The other student liaison?
Yeah, I'm not sure, Linda, have they come in the past?
You know, I don't really know.
Yeah, I mean.
I didn't, I didn't attend those.
I would like to see that also.
You're, you're welcome to come, so is that third Monday at 5:00 PM, is that on the bimonthly school year, is that possible for you typically, or do you have practice or?
No, that's possible.
Okay.
Practice, practice usually ends around that time.
Okay.
Or again, leave early, and there's usually no games on Mondays, so.
Okay. Can you make sure that your counterpart knows about that as well?
Yes.
Okay.
I have classes with her, so.
Great.
Yeah, no worries.
And I would normally say it would be nice if we checked with the school district to make sure that they wanted them there, but it is a public meeting and they could be there anyhow. So I would just like to see them invited with a copy of the agenda.
Go ahead.
Forgive me, did we get a chance to talk how Vice Mayor Walter had suggested, including planning commissioners or other individuals on these committees? Was this an appropriate time for that, Mr. Walter?
I don't think so. The city manager and I have been talking about that, and I think we're going to be looking at doing that maybe around budget time.
Yeah, we'll be bringing it back.
Yeah.
Understandable.
Probably in the spring, so.
Thank you. And, and I think it's, it's, it's an opportunity as a reminder that all of your Subcommittee meetings are Brown Act meetings, they're agendaized, they're public meetings, they're open to the community. And as any Subcommittee member, as you see fit, if you would like to invite members of the community to participate, particularly in discussion on an agenda item that involves their, their interests, that they're, they're welcome to, to attend and encouraged to do so. And these, these are, these are meeting packets that are posted on our website and, you know, accessible by the community. And, you know, of course, encourage, you know, community participation.
Okay, so let's, let's move on to talking about meeting nights.
Okay, just again, by, by.
Pros and cons.
Right, by, by reference, the, there was quite a bit of history where the city council met on, on Wednesdays.
For years.
On the second and fourth. I think the, the, the previous council or previous councils had, had made a change in, in part because there was some conflicts with the role, with the, the council members' role with the League of California Cities. I know we do have a mayor that continues to sit on the board. And there was also some discussion, I think, in the past about the impact of the meeting date and time on, on, on the press and when the press goes to, to, you know, the.
Goes to press.
Goes to press. Though, I, I, not to, not to speak for the press, but it seems like they, they use electronic format now, where they really post to the website.
It's not so pressy, yeah.
Not to make a pun, but right, is, is maybe not as pressing as. Not to make a pun, but right, it's maybe not as pressing as a concern where it was often necessary to have the, that, that information be disseminated so that it could be picked up in the newspaper on Thursday, so that is, that is one potential impact, that if you do decide to move it to Wednesdays, you know, the, the information from that council meeting may not be published the very next day in the newspaper, but I think, you know, they do a fantastic job of getting information out on the website, and that seems to be the trend. The other aspect is, you know, as I mentioned, was the, the return of our city attorney, you know, immediately, especially with Ms. Kate Cook leaving us, our deputy, deputy city attorney, would provide for that opportunity, but it also provides some opportunity for staff. Currently, as, you know, council meetings come up pretty quickly on Tuesday, and we often do a lot of work in preparation for your meetings, it would give us some additional time to, to prepare, gives council a little bit more time sometimes during the week to review the packets and, and get prepared. But, but ultimately, this is really a decision of council, when you want to hold your meetings and, and, you know, something to consider is what's maybe a best meeting time and date that suits the community's needs.
You know, it would come back.
And ultimately, yeah, it would come back by resolution to set that meeting time and date.
So I guess I just want to open the discussion, and I actually want to have a discussion here, but I'm also going to invite Zoe to speak at some point if she, if she'd like, if she'd like to, because her business will be directly impacted. Zoe, do you have anything you'd like to?
Yes.
And please come, yeah, please come up to the front, and please, I'm just going to open public comment now, and so please, please still remember to state your name and address for the record.
Zoe Strickland, I'm the editor of The Revelie. We do go to print Wednesday mornings, so anything discussed at the Wednesday night meeting, if that's the time that you guys choose, wouldn't be put in the paper until the following week, which might affect the immediacy of the articles, but as David mentioned, we do publish online as well earlier, so...
Okay, great, thank you. Would anyone else from the public, oh, do you want, you have a question for Zoe?
Zoe, so if, if we were to continue our meeting on Tuesday, do you have enough turnaround time to get it in the Wednesday paper?
Yeah, that's what, usually after meetings, I go back and write the article, that's what I'll do tonight, so...
So Tuesday is actually better for you.
Yes, okay, great, thank you. If anyone else would like to come forward.
Wednesday nights, it's also board meetings for Alabaska Valley Healthcare, and I think we will be attending city council meetings with things that are coming up in the next year or two, hopefully, so that would be difficult for board members to attend the meetings on a Wednesday. Tuesday's much better.
Great, thank you.
In reference to the meeting times for subcommittees that meet, not meet monthly, but on a alternate basis, if you could please state the first date that you're going to meet so that we can determine the rotation of the meeting times. Thank you.
And staff will bring back a resolution that has the, the dates for all the subcommittee meeting...
So when we...
For the whole fiscal, for the whole calendar year, excuse me.
Calendar year, so when we bring this back, we'll know what the, the first dates are and what the pattern looks like.
Right, right. For the most part, they, they correspond to the dates that were the same as 2018 with, with one, one, basically, they, you move the, because of the way the calendar worked, it's one, one day back.
Okay.
Just, just as a point of information, the demographics, what are the demographics of people who look at the internet for their news versus they want the paper in hand for our town?
Zoe, do you want to answer that?
Sure, I'm just trying.
Come on down. No, and I think that that bears, that bears discussion.
I mean, we should at least think about it, I mean...
Absolutely.
So I can't exactly speak to like crossover because there's no way to track how many, if the people who click are also the people who receive the paper, but I think people who are interested in the news will click the online link regardless, but I do believe that the print paper might reach a different audience.
A slightly different audience, probably, yeah, okay, great, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Okay, thank you, all right.
Yes, I think that the school board met on Wednesdays.
I don't know the answer to that.
I remember going to a meeting, it was a Wednesday.
Yes, but this is the city council meeting, and, you know, I'm sympathetic to when everybody else meets, but we need to set our agenda.
We have to set it for us.
I hear what you're saying, but it works for me to have Jose back, and I have meetings on Tuesday that I haven't kept for years, with the Druids, the first, the second and fourth Tuesday of the month, I constantly miss them, so...
So it sounds like we want to bring this back, maybe close public comment, and does anyone else from the public want to participate? And we'll bring it back and deliberate, so...
Okay, there's more discussion to be had.
Exactly, there's obviously more discussion, so actually, Mr. Vice Mayor, why don't you continue and make...
No, that was, that was pretty much it.
Okay.
Yeah, I, like I said, I understand that the, that the Alexander Valley Medical is meeting on, on Wednesdays, and surely I understand that there's other meetings as well, but, and who did you say was the other one? The school board.
And that's very important to me.
Yeah, we, we have them when we have them, so... I, I could go either way, I'm in favor of moving it to Tu...
City Attorney.
I'm sorry, I'm in favor of moving it to Wednesday so we can get Jose back.
Okay, so City Attorney.
I just was going to ask if, because it would need to happen, but you all set your schedule by resolution, is my recollection, so is the desire to bring back a resolution then kind of with a blank date and time for you all to finalize that at the next meeting, or to bring it back with that Wednesday?
You can finalize it tonight.
I would like to discuss it tonight.
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to just go ahead, and, so that we can settle the subcommittee meetings as well, so...
Right.
So I'll turn here, do you have any strong feelings either way?
I do. For the seamless transition with the city attorney, with Kate leaving, Jose can be back, and Jose is completely familiar, it would be a seamless transition, I say we, it'd be my opinion to move it from Tuesday back to Wednesday night. Also, I'm hearing from staff that it's much easier, it gives them that extra day to prepare in the week also, so it just makes sense, I think, to move it from Tuesday to Wednesday just for the seamless transition that it will be.
Mr. Turner?
I very much so sympathize that scheduling is very challenging in a small town like this, but I must concur, to have our city attorney back at regular meetings with an immediate begin date following Kate's departure.
Perfect.
Really sounds to me like we're doing a service for our city.
Well, I'll just chime in, this is, the great thing about government is the ability to make everybody unequally happy, or, and equally unhappy, so I, I kind of see both sides, and actually, I have the same issue that former Mayor Paula had, is that I'm on the League of Cities Executive Board, and the meetings always start on Wednesday, and it's going to be, and I'm going to have to make some difficult choices, but I'm willing to be, the two factors, one is being able to get Jose back immediately, at a time where we have a lot of very serious decisions to make, we, we need counsel of people who know us and know the, know our quirks and know our community, so I have to say, I have to support her for that reason, but I also think that, just from what I've heard from staff, that it, it's, it's, they're, they're jammed up trying to get ready for a Tuesday meeting, and that Wednesday would be favorable, and then you just go to Thursday, you just kind of have to float through on Thursday on fumes, and then you get to, you know, the, City Hall being closed, so I, you know, I have to come down on the side of anytime you have an opportunity to give somebody a free perk, you should do that. So that's why I'm inclined to, to support going back to Wednesdays, even though I know it'll be a little bit of an inconvenience for me with the league events, but I think the, the gains are bigger, so, you know, I'm going to, and I think I'm hearing, how do you, how do you want us to move forward with this, because there are people who don't agree, do you want us to, to take a vote on this? Because I think we want to bring the resolution back at the next meeting.
Well, I, I think I've heard at least a consensus of the council in support for the idea of, of moving the meeting to, meeting time and date, and ultimately, given council's consensus, we, we bring it back by resolution.
Yeah.
For your, for your, for formal adoption at your, at your next meeting.
Do we have some more, do you, some more do you want to ask?
I have a question.
Hold on, I'll, I'll want you to go ahead and ask your question, yeah.
Yeah, how long is Jose going to be assigned to another?
Regular, regular board meetings are on Wednesdays, by the way, so...
On school board meetings?
Yes.
Do you know if they're the first and third, or the second and fourth?
It looks like the...
It's opposite.
Yeah, so we would, we would have a, we would have a conflict with the school board, okay, we have to just go into it realizing that. Okay, so, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, my question was, how long is Jose going to be assigned to another?
Oh, he would be able to come back immediately if we move this to Wednesdays.
Yes, right, but what I'm asking is, how long is he assigned to another municipality?
We don't know that.
Open-handed.
It's, 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 yeah, it's, it doesn't affect us, because if we, if we, if we bring this back on the 22nd and vote on it, then we're moving, or we're moving to Wednesdays, and then he's, he's back available on Wednesdays, so, yeah, okay.
Sorry, Vice Mayor Walter.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I, I just wanted to remind you that I, I understand that you have a conflict from time to time with the league, but you control the agenda.
There is.
So if there is an item that, that you really want to weigh in, you could either move it up or push it back a week, so...
Right.
You wouldn't miss anything.
Right, okay, okay, sorry, Mr. Turner.
I think the moment has passed a bit, but I did want to comment that it's, it's nice that you are considering work-life balance for city staff, that is something that should be considered all the time, and it, thank you.
Well, the moments never pass for that, so, thank you, and Councilmember, did you have any...
Nope, I'm good.
So it looks like you have our direction, and we'll bring it back on the 22nd.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, what's next?
All right, so the next, the, the next item for your consideration are your, your regional board appointments, and I think maybe just following the process we, we just kind of went through, maybe start at the top and work our way through, if that, that works for the council. The, starting with the liaison for the Cloverdale Chamber of Commerce, the, the 2018 appointments were then Vice Mayor Russell and Councilmember Walter, as indicated in the preference indication, preference worksheets for council members indicated their support to be on that, to be the liaison. The, the recommended appointments were, or included, Councilmember Turner as well as, or as an alternate, Vice Mayor Walter. You know, I did want to point out, because I did hear from, from, from Councilmember Cruz that she expressed an interest in participating on that, you know, as a liaison, and I, I think that's something that the council might want to discuss. You know, so, because, because as, as liaison, you know, two of you can attend those, those chamber meetings, and what it does require is a little bit of coordination if you wanted to appoint another, another liaison, and then, you know, ensure that no more than two members participate as, are in those board meetings, but I just wanted to point that out, that Councilmember Cruz did express an interest, and it's really up for the council to discussion on what the recommended appointments are for the, the chamber liaison.
Anybody want a horse trade?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start here. I, I understand that Councilmember Cruz is very passionate about the ideas that she has, especially in regards to our Chamber of Commerce and working as a liaison. Councilmember Cruz, if you're willing, I would be, I would be open to trading you for the Library Advisory Board, as I was able to acquire the, the Planning and CDA Subcommittee, and so with that being said, if, if it's agreeable with everybody else at the DIAS, I would be also agreeable with allowing Councilmember Cruz my position. Knowing that my term is four years, I will get my term.
Madam Mayor, if I could, I've had the privilege of being the liaison since, I couldn't tell you when, but the last time I was the liaison was 2017, and I think it's really important that the chamber folks get to know our new council members. So with that being said, I'd like to step off of that and let Councilmember Cruz and Turner take over that chamber liaison. I have a good enough relationship with the Chamber Board that if I want to talk to them, I'll just call them.
Understood.
Is that, is that amenable?
That, that works for me, I'm happy to be the alternate.
Okay, so it looks like, well, it looks like you're indicated, you're indicated as first seat.
You're a chair, yeah, you're first seat.
So do you, would you prefer to be alternate, or would you like to keep your first seat?
I tell you, I tell you what, Councilmember Cruz, you let me chair the Planning and CDA, you can be the first seat on the...
Now, we're getting, so now it's getting interesting, okay.
No.
I think that was a no. All right, so it looks like that we do have, on the chamber, we'll have Turner and Cruz. Does that work? Okay, all right, want to move on to planning?
Okay, Planning Commission Liaison, the 2018 appointments were Councilmember Brigham and Vice Mayor Walter, and the recommended appointments are Vice Mayor Walter and Councilmember Turner as the alternate.
Ma'am, Madam Mayor, you know, and I'm willing to change and be the alternate on that, I know Councilmember Turner just came off the Planning Commission, and if he'd like to be the lead on that, I'm fine with it. Once again, if there was something of pressing interest, I would attend and, and as always, just remain silent, so...
I am agreeable with that, and with that being said, I am happy to relinquish being the lead on the Chamber of Commerce.
Very generous, but nice try. Okay, I think we're probably in good shape there, so we'll move on to Cloverdale Rancheria Tribal Chair Liaison.
Okay, the 2018 appointment was Councilmember Brigham, and the recommended appointment, because we did, we did have two, two, two councilmembers express their interests, was to continue with Councilmember Brigham and have Councilmember Cruz serve as the alternate.
Does that work for everyone?
There's no meeting scheduled at all, so it only is when something comes up.
Just in case they call.
And I know a lot of the folks out there, so...
Does that work? Okay, great, so going on to the library.
Okay, Cloverdale Regional Library or Lab, the 2018 appointments were then Vice Mayor Russell and Councilmember, or now Mayor Bagby as the alternate, the recommended appointments are Councilmember Cruz and Vice Mayor Walter as the alternate.
Is everybody happy? Okay, great, well then, moving on to, well, League of Cities.
Okay.
That's me or me.
Really, the next two items is reflective of Mayor, Mayor Bagby's role on the League Board of Directors, and we recommend continuing with those, those appointments.
Okay, great, and then the Redwood Empire Division.
Right.
Yeah, I'm on the, I'm the vice president of the board anyway, I have to be there anyway, so, but then if I ever have to be absent, I believe we have to also write a letter to have someone else vote, and so hopefully, you know, I'm hoping everybody on the council will be able to, you know, participate in the Redwood Division meetings, so... Okay, moving on to Sonoma County Air Pollution Control.
Okay, Northern Sonoma County Air Pollution Control District, the 2018 appointments were Mayor Bagby and then Vice Mayor Russell as the alternate, the recommended appointments, you know, based on preferences, is Mayor Bagby and Vice Mayor Walter as the alternate.
All right. Seeing no interest in air pollution control, I don't understand it. I see we've got a recommended change to REMF, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, absolutely, so...
Can we back up one moment?
Sorry.
Who is the alternate on the Northern Sonoma County Air Pollution Control?
That would be Vice Mayor Walter. Okay, so back to REMF.
All right, so REMF, just for council benefit, the REMF or the Redwood Empire Municipal Insurance Fund is the insurance pool that provides our, our general liability as well as our workers' comp coverage. For the most part, board members on the REMF board consist... For the most part, board members on the REMF board consist of staff from the respective cities. We were one of the few that actually had an elected official serving on that board. And of course, Mayor Paula, former Mayor Paula, served us well with his background and experience, particularly as a former police chief. The recommended appointments for 2019 are staff appointments. My recommendation is to appoint Susie Holmes, your finance manager, as the primary board member and have myself serve as the alternate. And that's fairly consistent with how the other, a number of the other REMF cities have approached it. Usually it is their finance manager, finance director that serves as the board member because of the direct connection between general liability and finance and your budget and, as well as kind of, there's usually also kind of a tie-in with workers' comp. We'd still encourage Ms. Moore to participate as time permits. I know for her, it's been a kind of a conflict because often the REMF board meetings coincide with Agenda Packet Day, so.
Which they won't anymore. But still.
So we just ask for council's concurrence with the recommended appointments to the REMF board.
Anybody have any other comments on that? No? Okay. That seems like that's going to be a good change. Okay, well, move on to Russian River Watershed.
Yeah, Russian River Watershed. So the 2018 appointments by the council were Mayor Bagby and your city engineer, Mark Brinkone, as the alternate. Given the expressed interest for 2019, the recommended appointments are Mayor Bagby and Councilmember Turner. I do want to point out that I would still recommend that your city engineer attend and participate in those meetings. Obviously, just wouldn't be a board member necessarily in this particular instance, but would still participate in those meetings, so.
Great. Okay, great. Everybody's happy with that? All right. Moving right along to Department of Health Services, Health Action.
Okay. Oh, just to point out, the way I kind of listed it here, I didn't, where there was two members, I didn't always designate alternate, but really the second person on the list was just, is naturally the alternate.
Okay.
Back to Health Action. The 2018 council appointment was for Vice Mayor Russell, former Vice Mayor Russell. And the recommended appointments are Councilmember Cruz and Councilmember Brigham as the alternate.
Happy with that?
Yeah. I'm going to be, I'm working with a lot of those groups on a couple of projects right now. So I'm going to continue doing that, but you can go to the meetings. That doesn't break my heart at all. And I'll go with you occasionally, maybe.
Yeah, they have a number of full, they have a pretty full agenda. And, you know, I think at times, you may have interest in both councilmembers attending that.
Yeah, there's some interesting stuff. I'm mainly interested in how the money flows. And so I go to, there's some meetings that I'll grab you to go to that actually show you where the money is.
And to share with council, often our assistant city manager, community development director, attend those meetings because it relates to some of the functions that he serves the community.
It'll be fun.
Great. All right. We'll move on to mayors and councilmembers.
Okay. Sonoma County mayors and councilmembers. The 2018 appointments were, really, it kind of comes down to mayor and vice mayor. And what we're recommending, obviously, is that Mayor Bagby serve as the main committee member and that Vice Mayor Walter serve as the alternate in case the mayor can't serve.
Great. Okay.
So, Madam Mayor, could we just make sure a little letter is sent to the mayors and council stating that I'm the alternate should Mayor Bagby not be attending?
Absolutely. We'll make a note of that. And I think we normally do.
Yeah. And then if neither of us is available, again, we have to write a letter before the vote, so notifying them that we have a designate. Okay, great. And I think we can skip open space because I don't think we have anybody applying for that. And then, so, Sonoma County Transportation Authority, Climate Protection Authority.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I know that that has to be by appointment, but isn't that also with the agricultural?
No. That's also by appointment from mayors and councilmembers.
Right.
That's correct. Yeah. So I've applied and I've sent my letter and we'll see what happens at mayors and councils, so.
Right. And the staff is going to bring back letters from those various mayors and councilmembers that are interested in serving on a host of regional boards for your next meeting to make a recommendation to the mayor or vice mayor on how to vote at the City Selection Committee, which is a part of the mayor and councilmembers meeting. All of those letters of recommendation will be brought to the council for your consideration. And I think what we're supporting tonight is that Mayor Bagby has submitted a letter of interest in serving as the representative, the league, or, excuse me, the City Select Committee's representative to SETA and RCPA, which also becomes
And SMART.
... a representative for Sonoma Marin Area Rail Transit. And as you may recall, formerly then Vice Mayor Russell, who was a very strong advocate for SMART and regional transportation issues, was the City Select Committee appointee to those regional boards and served Cloverdale very well. And I hope the council would support Mayor Bagby's interest in serving on those boards.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. The meeting for the mayors and councilmembers, I believe, is the 31st of January?
That's correct.
That is correct.
Okay. And our meeting, our city council meeting, is only?
It's the 22nd.
Oh, is it the 22nd?
Yeah.
Because I want to be able to get on the phones and campaign for Mayor Bagby to be on that board, so. I guess, will you let us know as the letters come in or do we have to wait for the packet?
I can certainly make an effort as I get more, well, as staff, we anticipate receiving all the letters at the close of the, kind of a letter due date, which was the 10th. At that point, we'll know who has submitted a letter of interest. We can forward that to council just so you see who those are.
Yeah.
But we are going to formally bring it back at your January 22nd council meeting for you to take action on those various appoint, you know, who this council wants to make a recommendation to your mayor or vice mayor on who they support at that City Selection Committee.
I hope you can get that seat up here in Cloverdale.
It's going to be pretty competitive, so.
Santa Rosa wants it really bad.
They do.
And they expect to get it.
Yes, but we have Gus working the phone, so.
I will also do that, too.
All right. So I guess we can move on to Waste Management Agency.
Okay. Sonoma County Waste Management Agency. The 2018 appointments included Mayor Bagby and I served as the alternate for that committee. We have expressed interest from Councilmember Cruz and designated, or recommended designating, Councilmember Turner as the alternate.
Well, I have a recommendation and it's going to be, it's a little convoluted, but stay with me. The, I have been serving on waste management for the past two years and I'm actually on the ad hoc committee to hire the new executive director, which is, it's kind of, it's at a critical juncture and we plan to interview, we've received applications from several candidates. It gets the first week in February. So if other councilmembers are not averse to this, well, first of all, your first meeting is the Wednesday of the new mayors and councilmembers in Sacramento. So whoever, whoever, if it's, whether it's Councilmember Cruz or Councilmember Turner, you won't be able to attend the first meeting. So what I, and I actually have to go to that meeting as well. I'm on a panel and then I also have a legislative meeting on, I think, Thursday and Friday. So I'm offering my services to continue as maybe, for the first meeting and then maybe just through February through the hiring process because I've been serving with the ad hoc committee and getting to know the interim director. If you guys aren't averse, and so I thought maybe I could even be the alternate for the time being. But one of the things we may want to do and come back, and I know it's, you know, inconvenient, it's actually really helpful if a staff member can be the alternate on that board because the issues are so technical. You kind of have to get immersed in it after a while. It's kind of, it would be really, this is one board where it would be particularly difficult to just kind of come in as an alternate without a lot of background. So that's my recommendation. But if, you know, either Councilmember Cruz or Councilmember Turner are really passionate about being an alternate, I'm not going to stand in your way. That's my recommendation.
I'm in agreement with Madam Mayor's recommendation.
So, Madam Mayor, how long would you continue to be?
I think just through February because I think then the hiring would be, that's what I, assuming right now because we're on course. And I think it would just be through February and then March, the new person could probably start up, so.
Sounds good.
Does that sound okay?
And I'd also further like to say that if you, your argument for having a staff member be the alternate was compelling, I don't mind.
Okay. Trust me. It gets a little hairy in the recycling and waste management world, so.
And so if council supports, the idea is to make a designation that Councilmember Cruz would serve as the primary with Mayor Bagby serving as the alternate at such time that you complete kind of the responsibility of hiring the new executive director, then we can revisit and consider an alternative appointment for that particular subcommittee.
For everyone? Okay, great.
Look at that compromise happening before your very eyes.
There you go. I know. I'm sure we'll find something else to fight about. All right, moving on. That's right. Exactly. So, okay, we'll go within, skip SMART and go to Sonoma Clean Power.
Okay. So the 2018 appointments were Mayor Bagby and I served as the alternate for that board. The recommended appointments, based on the interest, was, again, continuing with Mayor Bagby. I know it's just tackling some kind of technical issues on that board and I think would serve well in that position with Vice Mayor Walter serving as the alternate.
Does that sound all right?
Yep. Sounds good.
All right. Great. Okay. All right. We're through the page. What's next? Let's see.
I think that concludes the process of receiving council input on recommended appointments to the subcommittees and regional boards, including changing the time. We will bring back a formal resolution that actually sets the meeting times and dates and will, as requested by Mr. Cox, it'll actually identify the specific dates and times for those meetings. And it's just a good time to remind that that will, that will set the, kind of, the official date for those meetings. The subcommittees, however, can decide to change the meeting times and dates. And if they do, if they do that, then we'll just have to notice those meetings as special meetings when that situation arises, so.
Actually, on the 22nd, can we just have a consolidated calendar of all of the regional meetings, the subcommittees and the council meetings so that we can look at our calendars one last time and the packet, just make sure, yeah?
Assuming all the regional boards have published their meeting dates, we will make an effort to bring those forward with the packet for council's consideration.
Okay, great.
I have some of them. I don't know if I've received all of them, if they've formally set their meeting dates.
Right. I know we're going to have to jerk rig something at some point, so, okay. Great. All right. Well, then we will move on to item seven, somewhat in the same vein. Do you want to take this as well?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. The city is a member of the League of California Cities and we happen to sit within the Redwood Empire Division, which is really, geographically, is the area from kind of Cloverdale north. So it includes Menestino County and Humboldt County. They do hold business meetings as well as the division holds legislative committee meetings. For a long time, Mayor, former Mayor Paula had served in the role of both the voting member as well as, you know, the business meeting primary member as well as the legislative committee primary member. Because we have a new council, the League requested that we bring this back for council's consideration. I think the recommendation of staff, I mean, it's really the council's decision on who they want to designate and who can attend those meetings. Often, those meetings are located fairly far to the north of us. Generally, I think, understanding is that Mayor Bagby in her role on the League Board is probably going to attend, but, and probably would make sense to designate as the primary representative for both the business meetings as well as the ledge committee meetings. But that's a council conversation, discussion on what your preferences is.
I love it.
Okay, there you go. All right. I still expect you to come. Actually, the next meeting is in Ukiah. Friendly, local Ukiah. So it's not, the next one is not Eureka or some of the other farther locations. So hopefully, everyone on the council will be able to go. But, and I, yeah, I don't mind, I don't mind going. I think I have to be there an hour early for the vote, but I'm already vice president of the division, so.
I would recommend that this council designate an alternate.
Yes. Who would like to be an alternate?
In case Mayor Bagby is
Not me.
Not you, okay. Would you be interested in being an alternate?
Yeah, I'll do it if the newcomers don't want to, to get their experience, but, no.
Are either of you interested in? Flip a coin?
Well, okay, you do it.
On the legislative committee or do they meet at the same time?
Well, it's, they meet like an hour before the business. So you'd have to be there a little, like, about an hour. It's just, it works just like mayors and councilmembers, it's just an hour before the general meeting. You go over any legislative issues. Yeah.
It's pretty country up there.
Yeah. It's a pretty drive.
Yeah.
Are you, are you open to that?
Yeah.
Great. Well, then, can we designate Councilmember Cruz as the alternate?
Okay. And the action that we're requesting council to take tonight is to actually adopt Resolution Number 004-2019 that formally appoints
Oh, that's right. We're doing that tonight. I'm sorry.
Mayor Bagby and Councilmember Cruz as the alternate for both the business meetings and the ledge meetings.
And actually, at this point, I'm going to be opening up to public comment. Is anyone from the public would like to come forward and comment on this issue? All right. Well, seeing that, we'll bring it back to the council. We deliberated a little ahead of schedule, but I thought we were still working on the 22nd schedule. So would anyone like to make a motion?
Offer a resolution?
Offer a resolution?
Sure.
All right.
City of Cloverdale City Council Resolution Number 004-2019, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale, appointing representatives to represent and vote on behalf of the city at the League of California Cities, Redwood Empire Division business meetings and represent the city in vote at division legislative committee meetings. And that's going to be Melanie and Marta.
Okay.
I will second that.
All right. Thank you. May we have a roll call?
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Bagby?
Aye.
And Tucker?
Aye.
All right. So subcommittee items. How are we going to do this? Is this, are we using last year's schedule or are we using this year's schedule?
Well, these are the proposed updated schedules. Of course, council tonight did give direction to staff to update the meeting times, so those will be, these were just reflective of tentative dates based on the 2018 schedule.
Great.
It looks like, for the most part, the dates are accurate, though that will be available for your review at the next meeting.
Okay.
And then the times will be updated based on the council's direction to be back tonight.
Great. Okay. So, but we don't need to give any reports out, report outs tonight?
That's really up to council if
We didn't really have any meetings, so. Okay. Then we will move along to council reports.
I do have a council report. Madam Mayor, if I may, on January the 2nd, I met with Nina, the executive director of our Chamber of Commerce. On the same day, January the 2nd, I had a meeting with Mr. David Kelly, our city manager, along with our city attorney.
Okay. Thank you. And our student liaisons.
Okay. So my report is a bit short, but, so our league games started on January 3rd. Wrestling, the first year, is up and going, which is pretty exciting. And the bond measure H got passed, which is a pretty big deal for the school district. And there's an improv show on February 2nd in CPAC, which is here. And the new semester started today, so, yeah. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one thing I wanted to point out. I had the opportunity to go on the 7th, Monday, for the swearing in of Mark Essex, our new Sonoma County Sheriff. And it was, it was a very nice event. It was well-attended by the City of Cloverdale. Lynda Webb was there from our dispatching. Sergeant Chris Parker was there. And of course, the Chief was there as well. Thank you for, for that. It was a nice event. One, one of the things I liked that Mark mentioned, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, and I believe it was also in the Press Democrat today, he's very big on community policing. The same officers will cover the same area so that you get to know your police officer. And the one thing that I liked for a number of reasons is his focus on the Detention Center. It's not just going to be, from what I gathered, it's, it's not just going to be housing of somebody who needs a timeout, but it's going to be a rehabilitation effort as well with the services that are available. So it's not just going to be sit there and twiddle your thumbs. Hopefully, there's going to be classes on how to behave, so. It was a good job.
Thank you. You've been sick, so you're excused this time. Well, and I've submitted my, my report in writing, so that is part of the packet if anybody wants to take a look at it. So moving on to Legislative Report. I think, Report? City Manager, City Attorney Report?
Mayor, just one thing to mention. The, Lynda Moore, our Deputy City Clerk, has registered the city to attend the State of the County Annual Report to the Community on February 1st from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Doubletree in Renter Park. So we currently have eight spots reserved. And so we'd like to just get the Council's interest, if you haven't already, in attending. I think we've heard back from Mayor Bagby and Councilmember Cruz. And we will extend this invitation to, to staff. And if we still have remaining seats available, we'll extend the invitation to our, our Planning Commission and our, our Chamber Director.
That sounds good. Any questions?
I have a clarifying question. Did you say 7:00 to 9:00 p.m.?
Oh, excuse me. 7:00 to 9:00 a.m.
Oh, no. A.m.